I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, July 25, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Flirt Bell, please take the roll.
Commissioner Alsager?
Here.
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Here.
Commissioner Ronan is absent. Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a quorum, so we will continue the meeting. At this time, we have an introduction and a swearing in of a new police officer, Mike Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mike. Stay close. Tonight, I have the pleasure of not only swearing in Mike Williams, but welcome, welcoming him back to the Mount Pleasant Police Department. Officer Williams first joined the police department in 2008 and served on our department for over 14 years before leaving us and going to McCallister County as their undersheriff in 2021. During his initial tenure with the Mount Pleasant Police Department, Mike served as a youth services officer, evidence technician, field training officer, and fire investigation officer. We are very pleased, to say the least, to have Officer William back amongst our ranks in patrolling on one of our night shifts. Mike, if you could please turn and face me, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mike Williams, do solemnly swear.
I, Mike Williams, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the state of Michigan.
The laws of the state of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Mike, and welcome back.
You can say a few words if you want.
He's a man of many words.
Just really excited to be back in Mount Pleasant. And ready to represent the city and the Department of Public Safety to the best of my abilities. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Welcome.
All right. At this time, we have a presentation from the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Superintendent.
Good evening. I'm going to try to turn so I can facial and also face the members of the audience that are here this evening. My name is Jennifer Verliger, and I'm honored to serve the Mount Pleasant Public Schools as its superintendent. I'm appreciative of your time this evening and want to start just by giving you a little bit of background and information about me. I think that'll help frame my request that I have of you this evening. For those of you that don't know me, I do reside in what I consider to be downtown Mount Pleasant. I live at 402 South Vancher. I've resided at that home since 2007, and prior to that, I lived on Arnold Street. So every home that I've owned has been within the Mount Pleasant city limits. This year, in the next month, I am starting my 20th school year with the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. So very committed to our district, very committed to our community. As the superintendent, I have the opportunity to serve the city on the LFA. I'm also a member of the EDC. In my professional life, I'm also a licensed professional counselor. So I think that's all important for you to understand who I am as a person when I bring this request to you. As you know from your agenda, I am here this evening to request from you additional support of an officer in the youth services program through the Mount Pleasant Police Department. And you do all have a copy of my presentation that I'll just use as talking points this evening. We are requesting this additional support for the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 school years. We believe that officers in our building build positive relationships with students and staff. We know that when we have officers in our schools, we create a more inclusive and supportive community, and we are seeing the need for additional supports for our students. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Are you services officers are uniquely equipped with the support and the intervention services that our students need? And we believe that this plays a key role in the success of our schools. So just on a side note, many of the audience members that are here with me this evening represent a wide variety of our key constituent groups. I have members from the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education, members of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Administration and Staff, parents in our community, and also members from the administration of Sacred Heart Academy here in support of my request this evening. As you likely know, the Mount Pleasant Public Schools and the city of Mount Pleasant have had a long-time partnership. We first had youth services officers in our schools all the way back in 1993. And at that time, it was a very large program. And when we moved forward into the early 2000s, we had officers representing five different law enforcement agencies, and they were covering every school in Isabella County. So we had representatives from the city police department, from the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe Police Department, from the Isabella County Sheriff's Office, Central Michigan University's Police Department, and the Michigan State Police Post. At that time, our community and this program was recognized on a state and national level as a program to watch. We were leaders in school safety. Over time, due to different funding sources no longer being available to the program, it's dwindled down to where it is today, which is one youth services officer that is charged with covering all of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools and Sacred Heart Academy, as well as community events. We're very grateful for the support that we have, but simply put, it's just not enough. We know that the best approach to school safety is a layered approach. So I'm going to try to quickly go through those layers for you, just to give you an idea of what's most effective. There isn't one thing that we can do that will instantly create a safe environment for schools. If there was, somebody would have patented it, and we'd all be doing it, right? That would be easy. It's not how it works. So first, we want to talk about the physical security of our schools and our buildings. You likely know that our schools are always in secure mode. Our exterior doors are secured and entrances are monitored. Throughout the school day, visitors must buzz in, they meet with a person, they sign in, and then they're able to go into our buildings. Every building has a secure entrance vestibule. That's an area where they go into the building, into the main office, before they can get into the school. This last school year, we were able to install night lock door barricading devices on all classroom doors at Mount Pleasant High School and Mount Pleasant Middle School. Over the summer and into the fall, those door barricading devices will also be installed in all of our elementary classrooms. Another part of the layered approach to school safety is the programming that we teach our staff and our students. We are an ALICE district. ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. It's a series of training and protocols that we teach our staff and our students so that we are prepared to be safe should an emergency arise. We also teach our students how to be keenly aware of their circumstances and their surroundings, and make sure that they know who to go to if they or one of their peers need help. Our building administrators are certified ALICE trainers, and that's a training that's sponsored by Gresha Isabella RSD. So we're actually very fortunate that in our two-county region, all of our schools are ALICE schools. We speak a common language, and we all know what the protocol means. Finally, to create a safe school, we need to have strong support for the mental health and social emotional needs of our students. And we're really fortunate in the Mount Pleasant Public Schools, we have very robust programming to support our students. First and foremost, we do have one youth services officer. It definitely makes a difference in our programming. We are also very fortunate to be partners with the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe in the Project Aware grant. Project Aware is a $9 million grant from the SAMSA organization that the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe received back in April of 2019. That grant allows us to have six additional counselors in our schools. It also provides all of our staff, certified staff and support staff, with the training that they need to be trauma-informed school personnel. It gives us many resources in our classroom, including calming corners that are in almost every classroom. So if a student's having a bad day, they have an opportunity to take a break and regroup right in the classroom. We do have counselors in every building. We're a unique district in that we are able to provide counselors and support in every building. We offer counseling individually. We offer group counseling, which also often looks like restorative circles as we teach our students how to work together with their peers. We have a new partnership that we're forming with Isabella Citizens for Health, where we can put outpatient therapists at Mount Pleasant High School and Mount Pleasant Middle School in addition to the support that we already have. Should they have enough qualified candidates, they will also add additional support in the Oasis Way program. And then finally, we have a team of social workers that primarily support our special education students. When we look at mental health programming, we often hold all-school assemblies that focus on self-esteem, bullying prevention, social media awareness, those kinds of things for our students. Another strong support for the mental health needs of our students is our social emotional curriculum. In our district, we offer the Second Steps Program to all students in grades K-8. And you can see there a listing of the kinds of lessons that we offer, focused again on mindset, goal-setting, bullying and harassment, positive relationships, resolving social conflicts, those kinds of things. We offer parent and student resource libraries. Again, so if a parent has a student that's struggling with anxiety or depression, they can take a resource confidentially and quietly from our libraries, take it home with them, and keep them, and use that resource to help them. We have one of my favorite programs, which is the Therapy Dog Program. We have four therapy dogs in our district right now that meet our students' needs in a variety of ways. During this next school year, we'll be able to add a fifth dog to that program. That program is generously funded by the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe. We participate with the Okay to Stay Program. You're likely familiar with that program. That's a program sponsored by the Michigan Department of Education and the Michigan State Police. It's a Michigan student safety program, since students can anonymously report when they or one of their friends need help and support. We work closely with that. And then finally, we have our staff members well-educated on the wide variety of resources that we offer in the Mount Pleasant community. We are very fortunate that we live in a community full of so many resources and lots of support, but we need to make sure that our students are aware of the supports that are there for them, so we make sure our staff members know where to find those supports. Our vision for youth services officers in our school is quite simple. We really want them to be there to proactively build relationships with students. We want them to be a positive role model, to show our students that law enforcement is there to help people, to support folks when they're in need. We see our youth services officers as a resource for our students and for our staff members, and we really look forward to them having strong presence at our school events, at the events of Sacred Heart, and at the events in our community. Imagine a school resource officer being able to go to an athletic event or a fine arts event, or even do something as simple as have lunch in the cafeteria with students. That has a major impact on what they're able to do. The bottom line is that they would serve as an additional trusted adult for our students, which we know that's what our students need right now. The next two slides give you additional information on a rather historic school aid budget that was just passed and signed by the governor on July 14. I say that this budget is historic. It is for a couple of different reasons. First of all, because the amount of money that the governor and the legislature put into categoricals for schools is really outstanding. It's the first time it's ever happened to this level. And it's also historic because of the targeted areas of support. So I've pulled out two specific areas for you to see. One is under the umbrella of mental health supports and services. You may or may not be familiar with the Trails program. We do have a certified trainer, a certified counselor in the Trails program. And then the bottom section on that first slide, the per pupil mental health grant, for the first time, they are allowing us to use mental health dollars for our students on a per pupil basis, so it is not a competitive grant process. The second slide there walks through our school safety grants that will be available through the school aid budget. So the first section is also a per pupil shift, where before it was a competitive grant process, we've applied for those grants in previous years and received them. But you'll notice the second area of funding is a new source of funding for school resource officers. So in this new budget, the governor and the legislature has provided $25 million in a one-time grant for schools to hire our school resource officer. That, to me, shows a strong commitment to safety from our leaders in Lansing as well. I'm not here tonight asking you to give us something without us also having a commitment to the program. As you likely know, our district has received ESER funding as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we went through several activities over the last year, ranking our priorities with that ESER funding. We have approximately 20 administrators in our district. Many of them are represented here this evening. Every single person indicated that their top priority with ESER funding was a school resource officer or a youth services officer. We also surveyed our families to find out what they wanted, what were their priorities for our ESER funding. Of the families that participated in the survey, right around 700 families, more than 50% of them ranked additional support for mental health and social emotional learning as a top priority, and we believe this program meets that. We believe that supporting our schools through an additional youth services officer is an important investment in our students, in our families, and in our community, and we believe we're worth it. So we'd like to really work with you to see what we can do to put a program together that would allow us to have additional support from the police department. And again, just to point out, I've got school board members here. If you all would raise your hands. I know I have at least one board member joining us, virtually. District administrators, Sacred Heart Academy administrators, members of the police department, former youth services officers. I can see at least three here with me this evening. And I know that your time is valuable, so I've told them they don't have to speak to you all, but I believe every single one of them is here to show our support for this request. So I am very grateful for your time and your consideration. I'm especially grateful for our ability to collaborate with the city of Mount Pleasant and with the police department. It definitely makes our jobs and our lives significantly easier and better because we can collaborate and work together. So I'd be happy to entertain questions if you have any, or sit down if you don't.
Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Ake?
Thank you for this. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this presentation. It is thorough, but I do have some questions.
Sure.
And a question. The first part has to do with the delineation of the responsibilities of this youth service officer. And from what I have read, as you've provided, and also listening to you, it seems to me that the position would fit a mental health counselor more than a police officer, and that's what I'm hearing. Maybe I'm not hearing this correctly, because you have emphasized the need, you know, to provide support, mental health support, emotional support. Even when you looked at the governor's budget, the responsibilities or the roles of the individuals identified are individuals who deal with mental health, trauma. I'm not so sure that that's necessarily the responsibility of a police officer unless you're going to train the person to do that. You know, I'm just, again, sure, I am asking. I am saying, think about this, because what I'm hearing in terms of what is needed, where this person might work, sort of seems incongruent with, you know, what the tasks of a police officer would be. That part has to do with demographics. Okay, so we do have populations where, you know, the relationship with law enforcement is problematic. I'm not saying that it necessarily, that it is necessarily the case in Mount Pleasant, but there have been problems with Mount Pleasant Public Schools related to people who are not necessarily Caucasian. And in a situation like that, and you bring in a police officer, then what? How do we handle this? Are you prepared to deal with this? How would you address these kinds of issues? I am not saying I'm objecting to this, but I'm asking critical questions that, for me, are important before I even say, you know, what I'm going to do and where I'm going to go.
And I certainly understand and respect your questions. I believe that when we talk about this proactive approach, what we're doing is building those relationships with law enforcement, so that if there is a situation where a law enforcement officer is needed to come in, in the community with a family that maybe hasn't had the best experiences, our students and our families will already know these officers. They'll know that they're there as helping professionals. They'll know that they're there to support them in a positive way. It is true that we need help with mental health supports in our schools, but we need lots of help in our schools. We need positive role models for our students, because really what we're doing is educating the future citizens of our community. And so we're not naive enough to think that they're only going to function in the halls of Mount Pleasant Middle School and Mount Pleasant High School. We need to make sure that they're equipped to build those relationships with folks from all walks of life, because that is what they will encounter when they leave our halls. So you are right that we need that mental health support. I would say that our law enforcement team does an excellent job of supporting our families when they are in a crisis situation. I know there are concerns. I'm certainly, you know, very familiar with the concerns across our country right now. But again, for me, this appears as another opportunity for our families and students that need it the most to build positive relationships with our law enforcement officers.
Can I ask one last question?
Yes.
Is this person going to carry a gun or guns in the school?
Our law enforcement officers, our youth services officers do, yes.
Okay.
They are deputized officers.
I understand, but I'm asking whether, even as deputized officers, whether the deputized officer would be carrying a gun in the school premises? Okay. And I'm going to assume that you will be working with Director Loria over there. Don't look at me like that. Over there.
And you know what? That's a really good point. That is one of the big reasons why we are here. Several districts across the state have gone out on their own and hired independent officers or hired a security program or that kind of thing. And we don't want to do that. We want to continue and expand our partnership with the Mount Pleasant Police Department and with the city of Mount Pleasant. Okay. So yes, we would definitely work with Director Loria.
Director Loria, what is the training protocol for a youth service officer? What do they need to know? How are they trained?
I don't think I need that, but... So...
Yep, I can hear you.
Sorry. The protocol is all dependent upon the experience of the officer. So for instance, I would never take someone who's fresh out of the academy and put them in there. It would be someone more seasoned and whatnot. They go through a whole myriad of training as it relates to, well, first and foremost, juvenile law, but there's team programs and seminars that they attend. They do ongoing training on mentoring and leadership. There are obviously the de-escalation, but what they, they really work hand in hand quite extensively with the school administration. Some of the administrators here can talk about that, along with school counselors as well. So I can get you an exhaustive list that we do. I'm just not recalling all of it off the top of my head.
Okay. And in the 1990s is when we started putting officers in the schools, and that was basically because of the Columbine shooting. We started bringing officers in, and at that point, violence within the school districts throughout the nation was on the high. Since then, that has come down quite a bit. And when we put school officers, when we put youth officers or school resource officers in a district, a lot of time what happens is that the childlike behaviors that we see with adolescents, adolescents are extremely impulsive. That's their whole thing. It's because they don't have the prefrontal cortex development that they need to problem-solve correctly. So they are impulsive, and they act out with their emotions. Now, when that happens, sometimes a school resource officer does not see that as behavior of a child, behavior of an adolescent. They see, they immediately go to that this is criminal behavior. And that's not what I want to see. I'm not, I know that our youth officer has some really great, the ones that I've seen that have gone through, that they have got some really great relationships with some of the kids, but we also have to keep in mind that we've also gone through two years of trauma. The world has, and as an adult, you've gone through trauma because of the pandemic, and the children and the adolescents have gone. What we think is trauma, theirs is tenfold. It's way more than what we have experienced, and they will act out. So putting another youth officer in the school, I don't think is going to solve the problem, unless these youth officers also have a degree in mental health. They're either a counselor, a social worker, or a psychologist, that they understand development of children, they understand the impulsivity of an adolescent, and how to work with that. We have a mental health therapist that now works, a mental health professional that now works with our officers. And the reason why we have them, the reason why we supported that is because we know that not every case that an officer is called to needs an officer there. Sometimes they need someone to be able to walk in and not have that understanding of criminal behavior behind them. They have an understanding that people sometimes have developed behaviors that are out of fear, out of trauma, out of just being out of control of who they are. I prefer not to add another officer because of the fact that we have funding that we can get from the state for more crisis counselors. I mean, how many staff and teachers do we have in our district?
We have right around 250 certified teachers.
Okay. So you say that these officers are providing mentors. So the 255 teachers don't mentor?
Certainly, they do. This is a different type of mentorship and role modeling that we... This is a different type of mentorship and role modeling that we provide for our students. So when you talk about a school resource officer's response to an impulsive act or childlike behavior, I would tell you that in my 20 years in our schools, I've not seen our officers respond that way. Our officers recognize when a child is acting out in a school setting and the difference. I, their training makes them really understand that behavior. I think the other piece of it, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Star Commonwealth program, that is a program that our staff has gone through that gives us extensive education in being a trauma-informed school district. So one of the things you'll often hear our teams talk about is behavior is communication. Through acting out, through their behavior, our students are trying to communicate something to us. And you are right that certainly after the last two years, there's a heightened level of students, staff members, community members, families that are living with trauma and are acting out due to this trauma that they've experienced. So again, I'm not saying that this is a one level fix-all, be-all, end-all approach. We're actively searching to have additional supports added to our schools. This is just one additional layer of support that I think could be really powerful.
Okay. But don't you think that having more mental health professionals, crisis counselors would do more?
I don't see it as a zero sum, Ms. Mayor. I believe it, it both, they both need to come together. I don't believe it's one or the other. The way I read our funding also, we're not going to lose funding in one area because we choose to fund another area. All of that funding is available to us. So yes, I agree wholeheartedly. As a licensed counselor, we need more mental health supports in our schools, 100%. I also fully believe as a school administrator, we need additional support from the youth services unit.
Okay. And tell me, um, how many crisis counselors do we have for the district?
Well, so you say crisis counselor. We have at Mount Pleasant High School, we have five counselors that share the load with at-risk counseling and academics. We have a counselor in the G.I. Tech Center. We have, uh, Mount Pleasant Middle School, we have two academic counselors, two at-risk counselors. We have one counselor at every elementary building. We have a halftime counselor at the Oasis Way Program. Then we have a team of social workers that are also in our district as well.
Okay. So at the Oasis, um, those are the individuals that really do not fit that mold of, of what we consider traditional education.
The one thing that you have to keep in mind with the halftime piece there, those students are not required to be in attendance. So to have them actually come to the building, many of them participate in the program virtually and they don't actually ever set foot in the building.
Okay.
But you are right, that those are arguably our most at-risk students.
Yes.
Definitely.
So we have a dozen, maybe eight or so counselors that share the responsibility of, of at-risk and academic counseling.
Right.
And how many students in the school?
3,500.
3,500. So we have a dozen counselors to, no, I'm also a mental health therapist.
So again, Ms. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not saying that we have enough support for mental health. I'm saying we need all the help and support we can get.
So how does another, um, uh, youth services, um, officer, how do they provide more support than what you're not getting right now?
Because they're able to cover more of our buildings, interact with more students, build relationships with more students. We have one officer trying to cover five elementary buildings, a middle school, a high school, and alternative building, plus a K-12 parochial school downtown. That's just someone that's very thinly spread. So for additional support in that program, they have the ability to spend more concentrated time with students in those buildings.
Okay. And you're trying to reduce what kind of behaviors by having them in there? I know that you're saying mentors.
I'm trying to build up the positive behaviors and the positive interactions for our students so that our students can work through our school system, graduate and become positive contributing members of our community.
Okay.
That really is ultimately my goal. I live downtown. I, I see many former students. I, I want them to feel proud of their accomplishments, have a sense of purpose and a goal.
Okay. And a youth service officer does that?
I believe that provides support in that area. Yes. Again, I'm not saying that one officer fixes all of our problems.
Yeah.
Right? I'm just saying that this is another area of support that would be wonderful for our schools.
Okay. Commissioner Bush?
I was just going to reiterate, and you pretty much actually already said everything I was going to say, we share some common experiences. The, uh, the officer is just simply spread too thin. I mean, even if it wasn't for all the potential for relationship building, I certainly echo a lot of your concerns and I, I do have concerns the way, you know, some police officers may historically react to juvenile behaviors, but the bottom line is that they don't even have a chance with how thinly that they're spread right now. And I definitely agree, obviously it's not a standalone solution, um, but, and I love to see the details of this budget. This is great. I had heard about it, but I hadn't seen it broken down so specifically. So, um, yeah, I would, I would say that, yeah, it's just, just a simple matter of being spread far too thin, having to be called and back and forth. And I think one more is not gonna, um, you know.
And I just want to, I want to add something about the whole spread too thin. Whatever, whatever the board decides, you know, it's, it's your decision. But I can tell you this, that when you have one youth service officer that is, um, booked every day at the high school and we're responding with uniformed officers in the middle school on a daily basis, that doesn't serve anybody well. It's a distraction. Why are they here? Look at how many there are. The staff don't know who the officers are. A lot of the times they don't know what their capabilities are. You know, that's when mistakes happen. But you get someone who is there full-time, the staff, they're familiar with the staff, the staff is familiar with them, the kids see them. It is no surprise or, or no sort of distraction to see that officer in the school. And I can tell you that we have responded to the middle school in abundance of times throughout the course of 20 and 21, um, or no, 21 and 22, with uniformed officers because our youth service officer was busy at the high school.
And what kind of behaviors were you responding to?
If, if a student is, is destroying an office or, or something along those lines, it, it's that type of behavior. You know, where, where teachers, staff are scared? We don't, we don't go there unless we're called.
No, I understand that.
And so if, if you want me to say, oh, guess what? That, that's an adolescent behavior, you know, deal with it. I mean, we can do that, but we're going there because we have been, or we have received a call for service and, and they want help. And then our officer responds and, and they understand what, what it is. We, we've had long talks and, and, and a lot of training on, on, on this type of stuff. So I, I just think that, um, I just think that, that there's a balance there that needs to be had. And right now, um, there may not be enough of mental health services and all that, but the balance for the other side of it isn't there either.
Okay.
And my hope would be in the long run with a team of professionals working together, those situations that Director Loria is describing don't happen any longer. Right? This is not going to be something that will, there, there will not be a quick fix for the trauma that has happened to our children. But over time, with a team of professionals working together, I believe we can make a difference. And I believe this program is a critical component to that success.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Ake?
I just, you know, I'm listening to this. I, I, I do see the significance of what you're talking about. But at the same time, I want to echo some of the concerns of the mayor, which is that we don't want a situation where we're now going to have an increase of our students being sent to juvie or some having records because they were misbehaving or because they're having a crisis on a particular day and, you know, the officer misread that. You know, that's my concern. So, and, and that this, you know, I, I also hope that yes, you know, you've brought some, you know, you, you have, we, clearly there is tremendous support here. There are parents here, of course, but not every parent is here. And I do hope that you find a way of talking to parents who may be resistant to what you're trying to do. You know, to explain it to them that this is not, you know, going to be a situation where their children will be harmed because somebody has not been listening carefully or watching carefully, or because somebody has some kind of bias towards certain people. I'm not saying that it will happen, but there is potential for something like that to happen. And so all I'm saying is, you know, I hope that you pay attention to these issues.
Commissioner Bush?
I think what Officer Loria says, I would not say it a little bit differently. I think what he's saying is that there is a need for police officers, trained eyes in the building, no matter what. And there are going to be police officers in the building. I want a police officer who is specifically trained to be in a school and work with adolescents and work with the administration. So I, I, I think there's going to be officers in the building no matter what. Let's take the funding that helps support a specifically trained officer for the school district.
May I add a last word for me? Really? No, this is a serious issue. It is important.
It's very serious.
It is important. We're talking about the lives of our, of, you know, I don't have children in the school, any of the schools. But it is important for me, since I live in this city, that this, this, the, the students who go to that school, to our schools feel safe, feel that, you know, you know, and that their parents feel that their kids are safe when they come to our schools. Right? And that they will be protected. So yes, I hope that whoever comes in there, Director Loria, this is also directed at you. Directed. Okay, so whoever comes in there has, you know, some trauma training so that you have somebody who is trauma informed. And it's not just because you have gone through two years of COVID. There are other reasons why people or students come with trauma. And that becomes really, really important when we're dealing with law enforcement figures, you know, in schools where our kids don't understand when to stand down or calm down or do the right thing because they are terribly agitated, frightened, God knows what, for all sorts of reasons. So that's my worry.
I understand your concerns and I just, if I can have the last word, I would just say that I am fortunate once again to work with a top-notch team of professionals in the Mount Pleasant City Police Department who handle our situations appropriately and who work every day to make sure that our students know that they're safe. We're just asking for additional support. I certainly understand your concerns. I recognize the crisis that our schools are in right now. Our communities are in a crisis situation as well. So I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Director Loria, I would like a list of the training. Thank you. All right. At this time, um, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I would like to include perhaps the reading of a statement that we sent to the city of Okeechobee. It's a letter of condolence to the city of Okeechobee. Just simply to mention that.
Okay. Will you be doing the reading or is the, the letter has been sent from?
Did you get a copy? The letter has been sent, uh, by the International Relations Council. So I can read the letter. It's a very short letter.
Okay. And where would you like that?
We could put it at the end.
At the end?
Yes.
Posted as 13? We have an addition to the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the agenda with the addition?
So moved.
I second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? All right. At this time, we're going to do public, um, input on agenda items. If you wish to speak on anything on the agenda, please step to the podium. You will be given five minutes after you state your name and address. If there is anybody joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Once you are let into the meeting, you need to, um, state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No raised hands.
Do we have any emails?
No, we do not.
Anyone in the audience wish to step forward? All right. I will close the public comments. Manager of Dissents, please, um, give us the receipt of petitions and communications.
Yes. Receipt of petitions and communications includes the minutes of the planning commission from June and the second quarter investment report.
All right. Thank you. We are now on to consent items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that need to be removed and placed in the regular agenda? All right. Manager of Dissents, can you please review the consent calendar?
Absolutely. Tonight's consent items includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held July 11, 2022. Approval of the minutes from the closed session held July 11, 2022. Consider award of contract to denali construction for the Nelson Park shop renovation for $153,400 and a budget amendment of $43,400. Consider award of contract to denali construction for the Island Park restroom addition for $161,500, which is under the budgeted amount. Receive an ordinance to amend section 154.410.B.4 of the Mount Pleasant zoning ordinances regarding registered student organization dwellings and set a public hearing for August 22nd, 2022 on the same. Receive an ordinance to amend section 154.410.C.2.B. and table 154.410.A of the Mount Pleasant zoning ordinances regarding Group B special regulated uses and set a public hearing for August 22nd, 2022 on the same and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
I move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we will move on to new business. Item 12 is consider budget amendment for the purchase, setup and installation of Microsoft Office 365 and Barracuda spam and web filtering services. Manager of Dissents?
All right. Thank you. So the city currently utilizes an on-premise Microsoft Exchange and Barracuda spam appliance for email delivery and spam filtering. Both of these solutions are several years old and are coming due for an upgrade or replacement in the near future. The city commission is asked to approve a contract for Microsoft Office 365 as a means to improve both our safety and reliability of these systems. It is also recommended that the city approve a contract for Barracuda cloud-based spam and web filtering services. Use of the cloud-based software will lower our future hardware equipment costs such as server replacements as the data will no longer be stored on our servers. Included in the proposal is the upfront cost of the Microsoft Office 365 program, the Barracuda spam filtering program, and a consultant fee to assist in-house IT staff in the conversion of the on-premises software to the cloud-based software. Staff recommends the approval of the budget amendment of $53,713 for Office 365 and Barracuda filtering services.
All right. Does the commission have any questions they'd like answered at this time? Commissioner Bush?
I'm just curious how much you do expect costs to be reduced. Is there an estimate?
I do not have one readily available to me. I do know that we have our IT director, Chris Saladin, available. I'm not sure if he has an estimate as to how much that would be though.
It's actually sort of a difficult question to answer just because we wouldn't replace any of our current hardware, but the next time that we go to place, replace our servers, all of that stuff, hopefully that'll be a lower amount, but it's hard to put a dollar figure on that because it could be a situation where our BSNA programs, et cetera, need other resources. And so why, we should definitely have an offset of costs in the future. It's very hard for me to put a number on what that might be. It's very hard for me to put a number on what that might be three to five years from now when we actually look at replacing the hardware.
Fair.
It'll be an amount, but I just don't know what it is.
Okay. Will this stop commissioners asking me to do them a favor because they're in a meeting?
I can promise you that, but yeah, I should play help with that.
We get spam emails all the time.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. I will entertain a motion.
I second.
Who moved? Oh, I need to speak up, Brian.
Sorry.
All right. Is there any further discussion before we go to vote? All right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, we're going to move on to the condolence letter that Commissioner Ake mentioned.
Okay. So as you may know, the former Prime Minister of Japan was really assassinated, okay, a few weeks, approximately a week or so ago. And we do have a sister city in Japan, Okeechobee, and we also have an International Relations Council here that is part of its compost of people from the university, the city, and representation from the commission. And so we, in response, wrote a letter of condolence, you know, to the city of Okeechobee on behalf of the IRC, and also as a representative body of the city. So here is the letter, and this is what it says. It's very short. Dear esteemed Mayor Rui Go, Emai, and members of the Okeechobee International Center, on behalf of the Mount Pleasant International Relations Council in Mount Pleasant, Michigan, USA, we are writing to express our sincere condolences to the Okeechobee community and the Japanese people. Prime Minister Abe was a respected world leader who made many contributions to the global community. We share in your shock and grief in his untimely death. We join the world community in condemning this violence. Please know that your city and country are in our hearts, are in the hearts of your friends in Mount Pleasant during this difficult time. It is our hope that through global connections, such as our sister-city relationship, we can work toward a more peaceful world. Sincerely, Mount Pleasant International Relations Council, signed by Christine Peters, who is the current IRC president, Mara Leek, IRC secretary, Mark Marshall, IRC treasurer, Chieko Marshall, Julie Pamp, Jade Cota, Dr. Maureen, Mount Pleasant City Commissioner, Jennifer Evanuke, Central Michigan University.
Thank you. At this time, we will move on to announcements on city-related issues and new business. Do the commissioners, does anybody have anything they'd like to add today? Commissioner Bush?
I'm sure all constituents know, but I thought I'd put on record that this week is the Isabella County Fair, and not only are there many spectacular, yeah, this week! Not only are there many spectacular activities for families, but also informative booths and different representatives of our community showing off what they do.
Excellent. Any other announcements? New business that you'd like to bring forward? All right. At this time, we will open public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you would like to come up to the podium, please state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes to bring forward whatever you'd like to discuss tonight. If you are joining us by Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Once you are let in, they will ask for you to state your name and address, and then you will be given five minutes. Are there, is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak at this time?
No, there are not.
Do we have any emails on non-agenda items?
No, we do not.
Anybody out in the audience wish to come forward? You'll get to be on YouTube. All right. I will close this public comment section. We do have a closed session tonight. So to consider a closed session pursuant of subsection HC of the Open Meetings Act to discuss a strategy and negotiation sessions connected with a negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement, I will need a motion for us to go into this.
I move.
Second.
All right. And I will need a roll call vote on this. Commissioner Alziger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. So we will be going into closed session. We are going to do a 10-minute recess. So everyone out in the audience can move out into the hallway. We appreciate everyone's time being here today. I think this is the most we've had in here since we've been able to meet face to face, and I appreciate everyone coming in. Thank you. We'll go to a 10-minute recess.